There we go. Wondering Rebel Investigations, we're sitting here at City Hall. At the Common Council Meeting. I have a few concerns to raise myself. I had a few minor issues at the beginning trying to get the livestream up. Well, it's good, I'm back. I think I have it fixed. If you can let me know in the chat, that would be great. No, not court. I'm at the Racine's Wisconsin Common Council Meeting. Here to raise a few concerns of my own and attend my first city council meeting. It'd be nice if they actually held court this late. Um, I had a couple of issues setting up the livestream. And getting it all set up where it was actually in the state it's in now before it was in, I think it's portrait mode. So I had a few minor setbacks at the beginning. But I got it all figured out now, Birdie. Or Bird. That's what I was hoping for, Bird. I admit, my channel doesn't upload as regularly. And I'm not as technically knowledgeable as others. But I'm trying my best and I'm learning as I go. Looks like, uh, the gentleman right here on the right is streaming as well. Don't know where to. Probably Facebook or YouTube. Meeting's already ten minutes late starting. And I did sign up on the sheet to be able to speak as good citizen. I put Racine for my address. And Concerns as the reason for me wanting to speak. We'll see how the police officer there reacts to me calling out their department. Cause one of the concerns I'm raising is the fact that they unlawfully arrested me. Doing okay? Trying. Hoping to raise a few concerns, get some things addressed that seem to be being ignored. And I know I've personally Oh yeah. And I know I've personally raised basically every concern I'm bringing up tonight multiple times with departments and the city. So, pretty concerning when a citizen is actively bringing the city information to save them from lawsuits and it's being ignored. Definitely understandable, Bird. Hope you have a good day. And I understand that Bird is backing the arrest was a disorderly speech alarm as well as obstruction of justice. And it was thrown in because the DA finally looked at the case and realized that they had no case at motion to dismiss based on constitutional violations here. I don't remember the statute, Bird. But I know it was disorderly and obstruction or one of those. And I know about that too. Cause I tried to have a chance to figure it out before being needed to court, but they refused to even look at it. Thank you, Bird. Definitely appreciate it.
This way. Post a rail on the wall here. Members, the guests, if we take their seats, we'll get started shortly. Apologies to the gal who's here already. Closed session, discussion before we even start a grant. We left a little bit long. We'll just a minute to take a break and then we will be back. Do again. So we should start the disco.
They had a closed session meeting before the common council meeting. And that's why it's running late. And now Cory must make something. And so he was going to take a break and then start. Looks like they might be about to start now. I'll see. Might suggest a story about, uh, landscape. There's one more in DC.
Well, good evening, everyone. The hour of six o'clock having arrived. On the fifth of March, twenty twenty four, I would now call for the City Racine Council. Uh, the first order of business acting called order is the President's meeting. Please rise and join the members. Although partly over there, the excuse passes this evening. Yes, Commander Aldo Perez has to be excused. Move on then to the approval of the council proceedings or minutes from February sixth, twenty twenty four. All parties, vote up for motion. Yes, I have reviewed the minutes and I move through. Submotion to approve the minutes from February sixth, twenty twenty four. Is there a second? Seconded by all our wives to make discussion on the minutes. See now, those of you who please say ah, ah, opposed, then motion carries. The proclamation is signed for Women's History Month, which I will read in the record now. Where it adds the National Women's History Lines, let them move during March of National Women's History Month to create an opportunity to shine a light on the historic legacy of American women who built and shaped the nation. And the twenty twenty four Women's History Month is women who advocate for equity, diversity and inclusion. The theme of the night is women throughout the country who understand and advocate for a positive future, meaning eliminate violence and discrimination, tired of love. Women reverse backgrounds of long been for women efforts to address systemic inequities and promote a more inclusive and just society. And that courage advocacy for practical goals such as equity, diversity and inclusion serves as a beacon of inspiration for all of us. The state receives honors women throughout history as well as others working today championing equity, diversity, dismantle barriers, challenges and prejudices, create opportunities for all regardless of their background. Women's History Month uses the opportunity to reaffirm our support and commitment to advancing these principles in the face of current tasks against diversity, equity, inclusion programs and training in our institutions. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, for instance, may receive a receipt to be right to claim March twenty twenty four as Women's History Month and to encourage all residents, women who have dedicated themselves to advocate for equity, diversity and inclusion and work together to build a more just, equitable and equal world. Signed today, this fifth day of March, twenty twenty four. Well, now on the public comments, I would ask the clerk to read the rules. I would just let people know that there is a clock that goes for three minutes. When your three minutes are off, the microphone is turned off. That is not a reaction to whatever it is you're saying. Just reading everybody equally across the board. Everyone gets three minutes. I'll ask the clerk to give the additional guidelines on public comment.
The public comment segment is an opportunity for citizens to speak directly to the common council. Speakers will limit their remarks to three minutes. There shall be no dialogue or interaction between the speaker and elected officials or staff. This time does not intend to be a debate or discussion. The common council shall not their personal complaints or attacks against any sitting employee or elected official or any matter related to an individual claim, citation, appeal or lawsuit. Prospinging disruptive or ending or conduct that otherwise impedes the safe, orderly and effective conduct of the common council meeting is equally unacceptable during the public comment period as it is during all other versions of city meetings. While a group of people recommend in one viewpoint wishes to address the council, one person should be appointed to the D and C group. Candidates for public office may not use this opportunity to compete for office. Speakers during the public comment period shall follow all rules of the common council and rulings of the chair, including the decision to terminate their remarks if the speaker does not appear to use the rules. Public comments shall be limited to ideas or concerns regarding the city racine. There will be nine speakers this evening. The first is Sanaa Lee Hodgson, thirty eight, twelve St. Clair Street.
Hi. My name is Sanaa Lee Hodgson. I live at thirty eight, twelve St. Clair Street. I feel just as my concern about moving the hospitality center from downtown. First, I want to thank you all for your service. I applaud the work that the city has done to address some inequities in our community. I appreciate the foresight and the hard work that went into many various projects of our ground. Taking better care of those in need in happens is another step in the right direction. The reasons that I've decided to justify moving the hospitality center needs to be reexamined. Reportedly experiencing harassment at one outlet to come to the library is no reason to punish all who receive services from the center. I do have experience with people coming to me and asking for money while I buy the library. I'm not sure what gives us the right to expect that I walk from point A to point B should be the three of these options. Rather, we should see the humanity in people, acknowledge them and walk away when appropriate. Resistance to having a place of refuge for people who need life hospitality center in downtown racine is not good. But surely it is not a positive debate to name on the center for many challenges facing diseases over the last several decades. Saying that we are in fact to the fight of those the center serves and the lighting finds better location with so-called parties sounds nice, but isn't really. Instead, how about if you find better ways to support the center? One last thing I find about going to downtown is its diversity. The constant drumming that it is dangerous to be downtown is a myth. I live in the city. I go downtown all the time along with thousands of people who enjoy many special events, just like the one we had yesterday. Fear stems from the unknown. We need to see and interact with people in all walks of life, all levels of income and all ethnic groups. Finding isolated place for people who free from the center, as has been suggested by one owner, is just plain wrong. We need to have
Game of Valor.
Everyone. Educating business owners, providing incentives to hire people who come to the center and providing funding badges are a few things that come to mind for this concern. Let us remember Dr. King's call for a beloved community. Everyone should be included in this community, not just those who voice, whose voices are the loudest. I strongly oppose moving the hospitality center for the reasons stated in the letter ordered by Alden Comby. Instead, I propose having an authentic conversation with all stakeholders at the table, including those who free from the hospitality center to find a humane way to move forward without leaving anyone behind. Thank you for listening.
The next speaker is Josh Sobas at thirty two, twelve Paris.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Josh Sobas. Big buddy, you know me. Treasurer of, uh, Pristine Revitalization Partnership and have been involved for about a year, some of the operations in our work. Uh, historically, we've done a lot of projects in the last eight years and, uh, some of them have been, uh, first time home buyers, discounted pricing, others are housing that needs to serve those communities high to us. This period also included a time which we went through in building during the COVID pandemic shutdown as well as two horses at one site and completely leave the project. Even with such a given of the budget and return of our ninety five thousand, the city are three most recent projects from that. Our financial strength comes from our shareholders who value our mission to create affordable housing in our area. Uh, that's also quality housing too. Some of those are corporate community investments and Pristine has been, sort of highly spoken about our work on Facebook post just five days ago and attended our recent open house at the ninth street site. Additionally, Pristine Community Foundation had a LinkedIn post six days ago to celebrate both our working and community housing production as well as our volunteer, uh, house proud charity program. Our board is always available and I am very publicly available and accessible. Uh, yeah, with some of the noted complaints that I recently heard, uh, from a community, uh, and related to the prior offices. I haven't been contacted once by any of the partners involved. So for any of those matters of concern, I wish you consider deferring your vote tonight. And consider reaching out to me, uh, or any of the other board members to, uh, address any of the accusations or grievances. We're happy to do that. Additionally, as the president of Samuel and William, Wisconsin, I do want to congratulate the city on selection, uh, or apparent selection of Patrick Lynn and the team on management festival hall and memorial hall sites. I believe the city has found a department that's vested in maximizing utilization of these sites. Uh, and, uh, you know, really hope to celebrate the same reasons that I came to Pristine, which is it's amazing, late front, vibrant downtown. So we have the Samuel and William, uh, our Samuel and William committee and our event partners and volunteers, which includes full timers athletic club, volunteer center, Pristine County, scout troops, one twenty nine B and G, as well as many eager individuals, uh, many who were there at, uh, the, uh, empty balls yesterday. We hope to put on a family friendly fiftieth anniversary event worthy of the legendary Chief Service. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob of Rangers at nine, twelve, twenty nine.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bob Rogers, Vice President of the Board of Pristine Revitalization Partnership. I've been serving the board since twenty eighteen. In my work profession, I manage the community reinvestment program with local financial institutions. As such, I'm actively engaged with many communities organizations throughout the state, including those nonprofits operating as CHODOS. As you know, CHODOS are engaged in making revitalization and offer major financial research for the investment funds made available by municipalities, including home investment partnership funds. It's not uncommon for CHODOS to be highly reliant on all funds. It's not uncommon for CHODOS to be highly reliant on home funds. As an example, the CHODO in South Bend, Indiana, after which RRP was modeled, reports that 80% of their revenue comes from multiple federal resources, as indicated in the financial audit. RRP would be severely handicapped without the availability of CHODO homeowners. There's no shortage of opportunity to develop vertical homeownership in the scene through both new construction and rehabilitation as RRP does. In many municipalities, this is recognized by certifying funding from multiple CHODOS. At one time, the city of Resting supported four different CHODOS at the same time. The city of Milwaukee has about a half a dozen CHODOS who partner with the city development partner. They share the federal funding among several. I would suggest the city of Resting should do the same. RRP has also provided a state of Resting initiative, which we call House Proud. We utilize community volunteers to provide labor to make landowner repairs and improvements for central city residents who are struggling to keep up the maintenance of their homes. We have operated this program four of our last five years with one year absence during COVID. Over that time period, we provided this free community service for over 30 homes in four separate neighborhoods, including those in elder men districts numbers 2, 4, and 8. The whole funding provided by the city is used to conduct this program as is entirely paid for by contributions and sponsorships. As a result of these and other considerations, I request the common council to defer action tonight on appointing a single CHODO pending RRP to know how to provide additional information on its track record and merits of its CHODO application for certification. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lena Anthony at 1341 Washington Avenue.
Good evening. I am Secretary of the RRP. I've been with the organization since its beginning. We have worked on many homes. We do a lovely job. I enjoy the homes. We like to make sure that we have all the contractors that we need. We work with many different diverse groups in the city. And two chairs have now two to do twice the work. And I think we differ enough from the other government. And I think together we would, the city of Resting, will be able to sustain those. I think that knowledge is what the council needs to be able to make an informed vote. And as I stated previously, I don't believe that information has been adequately given to you. And because of that, I think it would be only fair to both applicants that we have the opportunity to show you what we have, how we are able to answer any other questions that you might have for us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joel at 432 Shoreham Park.
Good evening. I'm Sirus Alis in Creighton. So I was something that I was recently the board president for RRP. I had to rotate off of a year ago because of our highlights. I keep my hand, and I'm still on committees. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Resting Revitalization Partnership and their application for CHODO status. Since 2020, RRP has completed 11 projects, including six single-family owner-owned by homes, including two of those in new construction or being acquisition. In addition, multifamily, four rental, and a combination commercial residential building block of Washington Avenue. I want to, I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about one of the most recent projects, which is the 614 Main Street. 614 Main Street is a 12-inch block used for a building. And it's a three-unit residence, with two one-bedroom apartments and one three-bedroom apartment. It had previously, 10 years ago, had been rehabbed using some city grant funds. But unfortunately, about a year and a half ago, it was, it burned. It was a big moving fire. And the owners at that time were the city. And so they wanted, they were looking for a loan buyer. This is why RRP stepped up. It was a loan package that worked out. We got the required private finances to purchase the property. Starting about a year ago, specs were moving together and contractors were brought through. Eventually, bid matches were negotiated. The bids were awarded. Fund finance income came from the city back in July of last year. Construction started in September, finished in December. And occupancy finished in January. Currently, we have a new arrangement with Bethany Apartments to provide housing for the people who are coming out of Bethany. The arrangement is that we will charge rents that are affordable based on their income. No, at very low market rate. We are in the process of renting that place up. And I guess the only thing about the inclusion I've ever heard. This project shows RRP can deliver on budget, on time, and be city prioritized.
The next speaker is Diana Ryan at 2908 Indiana.
I'm a local mayor and city council elders. I spent two years on the city council 100 years ago and 14 years on the Resting Council Board. I want to thank you for the public service that you're giving and the good work that is being done in so many ways in our community. Tonight, I am here to urge you to return to working with the hospitality center to find solutions to address in public policy issues related to poverty, hunger, and the new pact of generational trauma that exists in our community. These are not only problems for the city, but certainly shared throughout our nation. The hospitality center is a local part of the solution to these problems. They provide nutrition, information, resources, access to social interactions in a safe environment, and basic clothing if necessary. Surprising to me was wondering the large number of the guests who come to the hospitality center that actually live downtown. In March of 2023, our Congress cut $3 billion in the supplemental nutrition aid program for our country. It will cut another 6.5 billion over the next 10 years if there's no shift in policy by those legislators at that level. It was sudden alone, there's been a 44% decrease in what many families are getting. When I went to nursing school, I needed food stamps and government commodities that were provided to me. In the early 1970s, when we had our young family, we participated in the food share program and helped us to live and be able to feed our children. I'm really grateful for those services. Part of my lived experience is that being grateful leads to being generous. Generosity is part of giving back and keeping the cycle of sharing and caring going. We are all part of the interdependent wealth of this community. I'm asking that you, as a city council, that you, as a mayor of Resting, that anyone here in the local city development, return to working with the hospitality center to find solutions and collaboration needing to solve some of these problems. We all desire a vibrant downtown, but policies that foster resentment or a sense of exclusivity or isolation are non-helpful. I ask that you restore or continue to give the least agreement and additional years to the hospitality center. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jessica McPhail, 3703, New Orleans.
Mayor Mason and all the people, thank you for your time and dedication to all of the residents of the city of Resting. I'm speaking on behalf of Coming Together Resting, an anti-racist organization which voted to write this letter in support of the hospitality center remaining downtown. I'm also a member of St. Luke's Episcopal Church, founded in 1842, which has a history of outreach missions, including Resting College, the Taylor Home Orphanage, St. Luke's Hospital, Resting Vocational Ministry, and now the Hospitality Center, which volunteers serve breakfast and lunch five days a week. We've also recently revived the free Saturday bag lunch program at noon on the second and fourth Saturdays of the month, the last seven days. 19% of your constituents live under federal饥 recovery guidelines on government assistance, in subsidized housing, and hayland, unconscious floors, or outside. People are hungry because benefits don't stretch that far, but they have to pay for something else like rent or medical, so why is? I wonder why it's important to so many of you all there that the center moves away from downtown where more than 90% of the guests live within the blocks. Why is the center being weighed for some people's behavior? Would new street behavior go away if the center moved or decreased? Is the city ready to help people in poverty who live in the city? Why are we so undogable when we see people in poverty, especially people who look different from us? I think it's important for us to explore that feeling. The U.S. is the wealthiest country on Earth. Why are people in poverty? I can say that it's at least partly because of chattel slavery. When that taught all of us that people with dark skin were only three-fifths human according to our constitution and were still living with the impact of that lie. There were laws that told us where people could and could not live, work, eat, go to school, deposit a bar of money, get America, or be buried. Those of us, those of us with lighter skin benefited from those harmful laws. Most of us are not in the 1%, the richest people in America. We are one injury, illness, accident, misbehavior away. In inclusion, the hospitality center should stay downtown. Thank you.
The next speaker is Pat Snyder. Please take your time.
Hi, I'm Pat Snyder. I'm Secretary Director for RRP. My address is in Barretti, 84. I just wanted to discuss a little bit of the issues. So last night, you mentioned that the city had with our base, I can't tell you. RRP has never had, we didn't have any, we can't really do this. We have five, and I had a job thirteen. I did, however, issue a letter of vacate due to this tenant, not tenant, client who paid the, our lease to pay. They put the clients in the house, and this is amended. So when I did a walk through, this woman only been here for three weeks. She had literally tore out all her hard-earned sun detectors, took the batteries out of the CO detectors. There were, the filth in the house was just unbelievable. She didn't see these all of the doctor. So she was ordered, I gave KRO a notice, 30 days. Because we need to, as a nonprofit, we'll just have, keep other living there safely. Four of our friends did work. This is our first time off from, from clients to the cities of the place. But there were reasons for that, and that was the reason for that. If anyone asked me questions, I actually sent the letter to vacate and pictures to Ms. Brown. So she was aware of this. I also want to talk about our work, and who did. Our performance in 2020, we did finish 11, and we are currently in construction on two new, construction on Hyland. There are going to be two-bedroom, two-bath portable housing that will be sold to 80% or under CMI. Regularly putting some walls in board, the houses will be set in March. We are on a schedule with that. We still have the five portable rentals, so I think from 2020 to 2024, and I was over in 2021, it's pretty good for 13 to finish. The other thing I do want to say is the last three months, we did finish this rant. We were under contract with the city due to an arson. We bailed it three times. But 221,000 backage with our insurance 20, but still 750,000 back, which we did for all the other homes. I just, in our performance, I sent the performance to the city. I would just like a chance to just sit down and just explain all these things and everything explained away or via email. This is not understanding where these actions need to come from because of my timeline doesn't fit in there. Thank you very much.
The public comment segment for all individuals to sign up with any and or address.
We move on then to the report. The first main report is the client's personal allegations of the West Virginia. That's a violation.
I had a public comment that I was just denied based on my Fourth Amendment assertion of my right.
So, sir, we've included public comments?
I signed up.
So you have to list the name and address to sign?
No, you don't. According to the Constitution, Fourth Amendment. So you're depriving citizens of their Fourth Amendment right to redress grievances and speak to the common council?
Sir, you are on board.
I am not. I'm asserting my civil right to redress my grievance over being denied my civil rights. Go ahead and show the world your corruption.
And without objection? Sorry, I'm on board.
I did, I did, I wanted to say I wanted to pull out my hands. Personal, maybe agenda, but just for clarity, I did hear from the public comment that you signed up. Can we verify whether the commenter, because I believe I've just heard them say they did sign up.
So there is no name given? It just says six, and it's not like, it's our policy that we're hired for people to give a name and address that's wrong. So I'm on board for that. I have some priorities, and I want to answer those considerations.
Yes. Uh, zero, one, six, nine, dash, two, four. And you have so much special consideration. You just had a question in regards to it. So I'll begin to get up and send.
Could you please say your name?
Yeah, thank you. Should we want to read it or?
Um, you should, or I'll just want to be guided, and then you can have your questions.
It is I, 0169.
He said nine signed up.
Communication is sponsored by Mayor Mason on behalf of the City of Minnesota.
So you guys just saw that. Mayor Mason decided to violate the Constitution, deny me and multiple others of our right to redress our grievances with the city by denying us our public comment.
...as the mayor and city clerkly grant a mission to execute a management agreement for the racing, setting up a city racing and a lot of campaigns. Under the subsidiary best part of the C.U., in the term presented for the period, ending 12/31/2025, physical note, annual basement, and fee assessment, 250,000 every year. Funding is available on the city's center and operations account. 60686-dash-5290, managing fee. Funding will improve December 5, 2023, for 2121123-dash. You know, probably to do that if you want to start voting, just have a question. Please say your question.
Thank you so much. So my question is, I'm going to catch my insurance here.
We won't have tried.
The market organizations of K O and Bethany, who offer housing to domestic violence survivors and most transitioning homeless. R R P's approach is holistic and inclusive, adding the full spectrum of housing needs in our community. Their projects have increased tax revenues and leveraged significant financial investments totaling over three point eight million. Whose arrival work will be devastating to our community? It all it should also be noted that the quality of their work and building materials is commendable and stand out in comparison to other nonprofit project. They strongly urge the council to ensure that R R P has the resources and cooperation they need to continue their work in transforming our city. Um, and I would like to write a letter from the Comming Treasure Group which underscores the importance of R R P's work and the potential for even greater success. Their given support and resources indeed. It is a testament that the trust and confidence that other community leaders have in R R P's ability to make a difference. And I got this from Jeff Ladd today. To whom it may concern, I am writing in support of the September fourteen twenty twenty three letter submitted by the Seating Vitalization Partnership, requesting time with the ten text foreclosed parcels in the power we need to make. A copy of the letter requests enclosed in there is listed of the parts requested. Any of these parts.
Oliver Coe is not dying of divorce right now. He's dying of divorce right now, which is where they're not designated. That's a destination, but he has to keep the house to remain. He's not dying of divorce.
Well, I think they're sitting to remain because you guys are saying they're not they're not confident. And I'm reading something that states something totally different.
So he doesn't want evidence to prove him wrong. So the mayor is trying to restrict evidence that their accusations are wrong. Which is him trying to push a private agenda. In my opinion.
But then this is a continuum. I believe that the comprehensive neighborhood focused approach presented by R R P has the potential of adding significant positive impact on the power we may. This proposal would result in reduced occupancy density and increased simple family homeownership in the neighborhood saturated with rent premiums. R R P has demonstrated a banner of success with previous projects in this and strong neighborhoods. A proposal presented by R R P is comprehensive and incorporate its full scope of work timeline and funding source. This project, this proposed project can strengthen the neighborhood, help them provide skill strength for local workforce, and provide accessible affordable housing currently in short supply. All by elements of building and maintaining the health of the community by the community. Jeff Ladd is the Seating Comming Treasure. Thank you.
There's a lot of comments made about city staff today. I'd like to encourage people to read the email that is attached to the agenda debate and staff to spend time. Explain the rationale for what the selections made today and the election call on R R P's motion. So for those of you who have questions about or have.
Because the city wants to have their hand in shit. They don't want oversight.
Thank you. I appreciate that you wrote a letter from the Comming Treasure. I think there's quite a significance to hearing the whole scope of what are the significance of our vote. So ultimately, I know that with Oliver McCarty's order, you know, there is a bit of red language that can kind of sit harsh on us. But it is it is good for us to understand the state in which individuals have function within our government and which way that the government functions outward. And to me, I can I can digest it as harsh language. I digested as understanding the timeline and understanding how parties have to function within one another. So I'm sure there could be some defensiveness that may occur when we hear it, but I'd rather listen to things with a different type of perspective. And it's it's about getting insight and understanding. So I appreciate that insight and view. I have had the opportunity to read quite a bit of emails and email change. So I understand where that language comes from because I'm under some frustration. I don't think there's no shame in admitting that. There's no shame on either side of the party that that's a place of growth. And so when I'm looking at a vote like this, and I would like to maybe respond to Oliver McCarty's.
Put them on notice while they're voting or interrupting anything.
To go with the suggestions as public commentators have mentioned about a couple of chodos. So I want to be able to address that statement. I've heard that too. I want to back up just a little bit more. When a meeting was called to vote on Habitat for Humanity to be awarded with the chodo status for the city, I question why are committee women to close session? I, you know, maybe that's just like, I I don't know if I can answer, but.
So they're hiding meetings when there's an open meeting, open public meetings act.
We're dealing with it now too when we're talking about it. And decisions to open up the possibilities, putting R R P's out there should be public. I don't see that it was for any reason protecting anyone involved.
Other than the government trying to hide.
So one of the things that I think that I'm deciding here.
Yes, I'm adding my own commentary. Sorry, guys, if you don't like it.
Or to refer it back to committee. I happen to do quite a bit of research. I talked to some municipalities that are neighbor and asked, well, I mean to them for many things. But as the public commenter had mentioned, the city of Racine has four chodos at one point. So our funding is not necessarily we have insufficient funds. You know, I would ask either of the parties Habitat or R R P if they feel that those funds would be not sufficient. It's just like working with other, I I I happened to be talking to one of the members of the board of R R P. And he reminded me about the continuum of care and how they work with the S P dollars. And they get together, it's very small amount. If you look at how those who are working within the continuum of care, their their final budget, it is a little bit, very little.
And I wouldn't be surprised if they've got cops waiting outside to fuck with me when I walk out.
Organization as chodo status does not do our city justice because they both have significance. If we get both of them and we are supporting them both, it's a wider reach, it's a wider access. Because there's one thing the city cannot do and it has to be the same grant funding that R R P and Habitat for Humanity can. So I want you to understand that if you reward just one, the progress on rehabilitating homes or putting homes on vacant lots becomes a slower progress. So I really think this does need to either be rewarded on the city or maybe referred back to committee. Because when I was at that committee level, I will tell you, you committee members didn't have any papers before you agreed agree. It was really just sitting in listening at a couple, truly a couple of bold and quick items that are up on the screen. I said to you, if I asked you committee members, how much do you know?
So if they don't want committees making informed decisions.
For maybe one minute. I think you really need to understand that the reason why Milwaukee in Madison, for example, have multiple chodos because they realize that they can address more of the housing concerns in their community. It's as far as stress having more than one chodo. And home funds are at six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, a minimum amount. So this is where the insufficient funds come from, Terry. They had mentioned at the committee, only fifteen percent of it, I don't know if you can map that quickly, is how they presented it is that's the amount that would then have to be divided between Habitat and R R P. But that's necessarily not the case. The city in the past has rewarded up to eighty or sixty percent of those lots. It's a decision made by the city. And Kenosha does thirty percent, but they labor between fifteen to, I think it was like fifty seven percent. I talked to Kenosha. So ultimately, that's a significant amount of money. So I I would like to make a motion to refer this back to committee.
Does the motion made by Oliver Coe to refer this item back to the C D G advisory board seconded by Oliver Coe? Other than which, like, see, what are your motion?
I think, thank you, Mayor. I think the only thing I truly want to encourage those other cops tonight, whatever referral does. I mean, ultimately, if you decide just to go with one, you have some time to be educated. You know, it's all about doing our diligence in this position. I have I have nothing bad to say about Habitat for Humanity. And I have to get to say about R R P, I think they've both been really good work and we need to support both of them. I don't think we need to limit the that type of work on our housing stuff right now. And being able to allow us to go back to the committee allows us to hear and for you to understand maybe what the pros and cons are about having homes or two chodos. And it allows you to reach out to our neighboring communities who have multiple chodos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and speak against the motion to refer back. The presentation was a bold one presentation and there was robust discussion on this, honestly. I don't see if they come back and say, do you have any different conclusion, honestly, regarding this? I will say that in any case, if there are multiple organizations who are paying administration, there is money going to administration that is not going at that point to the actual mission of those organizations. These organizations can continue to operate, do better, do what they do, do well, whatever they have.
I think I'll wait till the end to put them on notice.
Oliver, here.
Thank you. I just had to agree with all of the opinions on you of this. Like all the property did say there were some uncompliments on R R P regarding HUD, HUD losing regulations. I did see it a couple here in in the middle. Will that in any way affect funding from HUD if we continue with R R P, the chodo plan, the R R P's overseeing chodos?
Oliver, do you have a very question to our director of?
Thank you, Oliver, that was a very good question. Yes, we are under audit for some issues related to R R P right now that could jeopardize future funding for our organization.
Other question. And do you have a timing about when those will be resolved or that they're like clear if they're low they find them out of compliance or is it something like? Regardless, I can, that's that's a question.
We are, we received a letter today. I believe our finding, I just briefly read the email, happens sometime in late March, early April. So we'll have an determination by the end of April.
Okay, well, I I do agree with Oliver, because that that's me anyways. That's my stated point, like, it's all a compliance issue because that will affect money that's coming.
Exactly.
Oliver.
Yeah, just a couple of things. In the least, just allegations being made that they don't have the funding. Well, one thing I know for sure, we don't give anybody these ten halls. They can't go up for funding. The Dominican Nuns got gave up three hundred and fifty thousand dollar line of credit to do houses. But if we don't have houses because we're sitting in them, they're not giving up. And also, if these guys were so bad, why did we give them four hundred and thirty six thousand dollars for an island project that would be building two brand new homes over there and the price tag is around three hundred and fifty thousand a piece? If these people were so bad, why are we giving them this funding? Like I said, they have they have people there to go off to try additional funding. But the city, for some reason, will not release any of these houses and they're going to sit there and one, two, three of them today. And if we don't do something soon, we're going to have more holes. So we need to get a better handle on getting together with this. Everybody needs to get on the same floor here.
Yeah, thank you. I just want this council to recognize this is really, I I know the tone may come across as there's some tension behind it. But this is a positive thing truly that we're doing. And to to refer it back to committee will allow us to continue to talk about how our efforts can really help, how our efforts can expand even more. With a minimal amount of money, so six hundred and sixty thousand dollars of home funds is quite significant truly. And dividing that even to a portion, whether it's a minimum of fifteen percent, thirty percent, or whatever the city may decide that in a year, is pretty significant to a nonprofit. I would like to hear how we can do our very most with that, if you will, minimal amount of money. I would hope you would too. I mean, I feel like that's what we try to do with our taxpayer money. How can we get the biggest bang for our buck? I'm telling you, you are limiting your bang by only going with one chodo. Who you are, I want you to recognize that. And so, you know, please allow us to go back. I'm going to tell you, I wasn't that mean. I would make a differ that there was not a robust discussion that took place, especially in regards to what does it mean to have two chodos? It was just simple natural, it was not simply good funds, it's only hundred thirty seven thousand dollars. Well, I would like that to be expanded. And I also would like to mention that in the past, around the time a lot of this contentious habit, ever contention happened between the city and R R P, it was during the time we lost a lot of staff in city development. So I want you to put it on the topic of the home funds and chodo, it's a very complicated issue. So it takes a while for staff to probably get up to speed on these on chodos and the funding to go to it. So, you know, no fault on the city, I mean, everybody has a learning curve, if you will. But maybe they need to investigate why or visit a better venue, can the bank for the buck, right? So please hear me out here and allow this to get referred back to committee. And then if it does, partake in that discussion so you can understand it before a final vote. Rather than coming this evening with limited information, we all have time we can't hear on the floor to talk about it. Thank you.
Oliver, second.
Thank you. I guess I want to agree with everyone on the floor here. But I appreciate what older, clearly, and our older party, older chair are asking these questions. Because as I'm listening to those who are in the audience and the research that I've done, the experience that I have, I too am a little bit confused and would feel uncomfortable making a very firm vote on this. I'm definitely agreeing that somehow for us, but again, and I could just, you know, our, and again, seeing your eyes and the director was speaking there. Can't help but notice R R P people here who are, like, what came in through today that they seem surprised about as well, based on his commentary, and now this is just me being visual. So for me personally, if this wasn't deferred, I suppose I would stay for consult because I feel that I do not have enough education on it as much as I've tried. But I really feel as though, again, I kind of, I appreciate this discussion. But for me, I think that I have a little bit more discussion and a little bit more clarification as to, I didn't even, you know, clarify the language, right? So I don't chodo as community, community, obviously, development organization. I didn't even know chodo was what it was referred to. So I I would just like to say that I think that being made more accurate would really personally, based on my information with Eric.
Oliver, here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you agree with this assessment, felt it counted and if it was magical, this discussion regarding whether it has some chodos or not? Probably those particular chodos and according, well, it's covered up. With that, I can move to coming back to committee at this point. I will say Oliver Coe has crystallized, I mean, very much over here. He's crystallized the mission of the two organizations we'll be discussing in some other committee. Why one is focused on political housing, one is focused on new construction and owner occupied homes that that can get for many. That is certainly what I want for our elders. And when we get back into our discussions, if we can choose it for the second committee, that will be part of the discussion. Motion for us is to refer this item back to the C D G advisory board. And the vote is to refer a item back to the C D G advisory board. And the clerk puts the vote on your screen, please, as you wish. Thirteen highs and one low, the item is referred back to the C D G advisory board. Oliver, if you can add any other items, other item, for separate consideration from the C D G advisory board. And then, there's one, all right. Then move on to the office of Mayor Porter, Oliver, if you have a question, if you'd like this separate consideration.
Yes, I would, and I'll, Mr. Mayor, please.
Please, again.
I have one eighty-three dash twenty-four, and communication's on Friday basis, day of the article. Follow the motion on the six hundred and thirty C board for January twenty twenty-six. Say David Jackson's support contribution couple services for January thirty twenty twenty-six. And again, that is the board. And all incentives, so that is the board for January third, one twenty twenty-six.
Who? Motion approved, I have this indicated by Oliver Coe. Any discussion on site? Seeing down the purple open door. When it's on your screen, please, folks, as you wish. Motion passes the energy, this now moves this on, and then, Oliver, take this time to the motion approved, sent to the end.
Rule approved, sent to the end.
So motion approved, sent to the end, seconded by Oliver, and all of the people who sent to the end, please say aye.
Aye.
Those votes, that vote you hear, if you move on, and come, come, so else. Just a reminder, none of our only to recognition of city residents, employees, morals, and non-civil community events. Especially as late as the current level, this is prohibited. Just wanted to shout out all the organizations that have been involved in this event. That was at the school hall yesterday, I've read the engagement petition, great season with Mayor, I have the ownership, so I'm glad we did much. But the good times have been all lots of super zebra that are meeting, raising the volume for, for a few months. So I want to congratulate everyone that was engaged there. Oliver, here.
Yeah, last week, we lost a staple in the city, particularly with me. I want to commend Ralph Lecky and his staff for the great service they did for the city of Racine. Ralph was involved in many, many different kinds of fundraisers, helping their veterans and everything. And I just want to give a big shout out because there can be soreness.
That was an amazing story.
Jeff Coe, thank you for honoring really what Ralph Lecky has done with the grocery store, right? All the work he's done for our community, I mean, if it's an individual, what he's done within the world of that. So I'm really glad to do that. Thank you for that. And Mayor, you mentioned empty bowls and that it'll lead into what I want to celebrate tonight. Empty bowls, back in twenty thirteen, I have always volunteered for them because I worked for the homeless shelter. But that year in particular, I was like, gosh, I really want to volunteer, but my due date's today. And so they put me as a greer by the front door, and which was very wise, and I'm glad that they did. But in less than twenty-four hours, they could go into labor. So with the help of empty bowls, so I'm celebrating my son's birthday, which will be this Thursday. He will be eleven years old, it was eleven years ago. And why this chamber is so special is I'm very pregnant, I served on the council before. But I would often use the mayor's office to nurse my child. So my child would have to come with me, I wouldn't hardly shave his head, remember those times? But this was prior to all this technology that we have. But they somehow arranged in the back room in the mayor's office for me to still partake in the city council meeting while I was still able to nurse my child. So it was very special that, happy birthday, kids. Oh, cute. But I also want to thank, well, Henry Price is not here, but thank you, Henry Price, if you listened back to this. Jeff Coe, you did come to partake in my landlord property manager forum when we had the state come. And it was so, so successful. I just want to just tell the all of the here who have different type of events to try to get your constituents to come to, you know, what, first of all, you wonder how well attended it will be. And then the second part is how will the energy in the room be, right? It's kind of, and nervous, thank you, our collector of complaints ultimately. And for the landlord property manager forum, three times, I had to move away more chairs. And so quite successful, it was the second one, I was so positively received that the one hour and a half that I had to have to make for tournament three hours. And it ended with a round of applause. So quite successful. I know other elders were interested and had conflicts and normally have that recorded. I did try to record it, but there was no sound. I don't know if I get it viewed or, you know, I assume. But there will be a virtual one to make up for it. And it will be a run, we may return it first, so I'll be sure to put that out there. But I just want to thank those elders and also thank Kelly Green, who stayed the whole duration as well. And it was so great to have that connection with the city. So thank you, city staff, to have been supporting that.
Oliver.
Thank you, I just want to go on. Well, the earlier announcement is wish all the friends have a great day. You will lose on segment, you will see what is not, so just have a great all for us.
Oliver.
Thank you, Honor, just like this, thank all the organizations that celebrated my place for last month. The city who recognized the community, the county that recognized the different, the group and all of them that's within the city. You know, that that really, really went out and participated and had a lot of events, receiving by student district, had a lot of events, and I just like to say, you know, thank you to the organizers, those that were recognized. And just keep moving forward, thank you guys, your opinions you guys have done, thank you.
Thank you, Oliver.
So Mayor, you might want to be put on notice that you just created civil and criminal liability for the city and yourself. I hope you enjoy criminal and civil court, Mayor. Learn the rights of the people.
So this is wandering rebel investigation. Reven, the meeting. Sorry about the minor issues with memory. But I'll catch you guys in the next one. Peace out.